We call it the witching hour.
It is now 7:00 PM, Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, and I call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Would you please lead the roll call vote?
Arlandu?
Here.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Present.
Meadows?
Present.
Sliger?
Present.
Mathis?
Here.
Locke?
Here.
Kilburg?
Present.
I would like to invite Raquel Gonzalez-Thomas to lead us in the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right? Thank you, Raquel. Tom, are there any items to add or remove from the agenda?
No.
Great. All right, this evening we will celebrate the success of the Computer Science Program at BHS. The College Board recently recognized BHS for improving female representation in AP Computer Science Principles. According to U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics, women represent just 26.9% of the 6.5 million people employed in computer and mathematical occupations. Joining us today are Chris Ozarka and Kevin Jensen, BHS Computer Science teachers, and three of their students, Sarah Mathali and Michaela.
So Kevin actually had a baseball game, so he wasn't able to make it.
Oh.
I don't know where the other two are.
Hey, 26.9.
And I just, before I start, I did have four hours of proctoring the ACT this morning, so if I'm a little fried, I apologize ahead of time. Do I have to talk into this, or am I?
You're good.
Sorry, first time here. I'm Chris Ozarka, I teach math and computer science at BHS, and I appreciate the opportunity to come here and celebrate our successes while allowing me to promote our CS program. I started working at BHS 11 years ago, and Brian Gamlin, the Assistant Principal at BHS, he had this big overarching vision of creating a sequence of CS courses. Back then, it was just an intro to computer science class that was just a term long, and that was it. But he wanted to make like a whole sequence of it, just to kind of push people if they're interested in that, in majoring in computer science. Here's the courses right there. I can talk about them forever, they wanted me to talk about them. I'm not going to, because I'll go over time with that. But I do, yeah, those first three are the ones we have now, that fourth one is in developments, cybersecurity. And they're all primarily focused on career pathways, because it's just, there's tons of jobs, tons of growth in this field. So those are the courses we have right there. As the CS program gained popularity with students, we need another teacher to cover all the requests. He's not here, but Kevin Jensen took over the intro class, completely reworked it, kind of made it his baby, while I took over the two and three classes there. And while the program grew, one thing was lacking, was female representation. In the early days, many of our classes had little to no female students, like there was times where you just had zero. And so we started researching this, and we noticed a trend. We found this graph here, it says, "What happened to women in computer science?", percent of women majors by field. And try to use this laser pointer here. So if you notice, like around the 60s here, super low with med school, law school, physical science, computer science, but they all started in the same spot. And then as time went by, they all kind of went up here around 50%, which kind of makes sense, given the population. But for some reason, computer science kind of peaked here and then went downhill. That's the only graph I can find, I know it stops at 2015, but it was the best one I can find. And I believe you said it was 26% now? So still kind of around, I mean, it went up a little bit, but yeah. So there's a story there, I actually talked about this in our class, just to kind of make it known of why that is. Does anybody know why? By chance? 1984? So we actually started having computers in the home now, so personal computers. Apple had a ton way back in the 80s, you can look up the commercials on YouTube still, but they were all focused primarily on pushing it to, for boys. It was all boys, marketing for boys. And so because of that, they were still focusing on majoring in computer science, but it kind of got viewed more as a boy thing, computers were a boy thing. Excuse me. And it kind of persists to this day, if you think about tech pioneers, you know, Zuckerberg, Gates, Bezos, you name it, Steve Jobs. So it kind of persisted that stereotype, so that's why it kind of continued from there. And there's a lot of other factors, but that's the main factor with that. So yeah, computers started entering the home. To overcome this stereotype, what we started doing with BHS is just getting counselors more involved, talking to students. The students themselves, that's why we have a student here that's going to talk about that, just promoting it. The Women in STEM Club is a new club run by Susan Fricki at the high school, she kind of promotes that stuff as well, having guest speakers come in, talk about that. And then our own research, our own outreach, reputation of the program, just kind of started building it. So we're getting closer to that 50%. There was research done by Harvey Mudd College, so here's another, this is the last graph, I promise. Where it kind of shows like US average for computer science majors. But then Harvey Mudd started doing interventions, kind of the same thing that I was talking about before, just outreach, focusing on more like collaboration rather than competition within computer science, just making it more open to females, and they actually cut that into about 50%. If you look up theirs, it says 48.8%. Toward the end of it, it's actually higher than 50% now, again, that's the only graph I could find for that. So we're trying to mimic kind of that Mudd model of what they did, Harvey Mudd College, what they did. So, sorry. And as parents and educators, so why is this important? As parents and educators, we want our students to have options, and if they don't have options, if they don't know they have options. So that's the big thing that we're trying to encourage. This graph, again, going back to this, it would have kept trending to 50% if that, you know, marketing and other issues didn't happen, so we're trying to close the gap on that. And the main thing, critical thinking is what we want to focus on in all three of our computer science classes at BHS, not just how to code, but how to think. So by empowering students, especially females, with these skills, we're not just teaching computer science, we're shaping the next generation of problem solvers and innovators. And then I kind of want to end with this quote here, which I think is kind of meant to be tug-in-cheek, but it's kind of funny as well. And then I'm going to introduce one of my students to talk.
Hello, um, good evening. So my name is Sarah Alf, and I'm a junior at Batavia High School. And my freshman year, I signed up for a class called Computer Science Principles. Didn't really know what I was going into, I've done STEM and robotics my entire life. But for as long as I can remember, I've wanted to go into engineering, and I thought it was so cool. And being part of the Computer Science Program was a huge part in my journey. Like I mentioned, when I first started, I was the only girl in my class. And that was kind of intimidating, but it also pushed me to grow and find my voice in a field where I didn't really think I could belong. But I was able to come up and work in a place where I did belong. And with the support of amazing teachers like Mr. Ozarka, I was able to find the confidence not only to stick with the field of engineering, but also build a community where other girls could feel welcome to. And as you mentioned, like we've encouraged friends and younger girls to join the classes, because it does truly open up so many doors and opportunities, especially in our growing world. And that's why the award from the College Board means so much to me personally, is it shows that Batavia is making real progress and creating a space for girls like me to feel, have confidence and leadership and opportunity in this ever-growing field of engineering and computer science. And I hope that this award inspires more girls to take the leap and to try something new, and to find their creativity and voices in tech, because we truly do need that. So thank you for supporting programs like this, and have a great night.
Any board member comment at all, or? Thank you very much for.
I have one question.
Yes, Sue, go for it.
Chris?
Chris?
This award. What are the parameters, what's it based on, why'd you get it?
So this one in particular is APCSP, so that's the second plat.
Is that what she was referring to, or?
She did take that class, she also took the APCSA one as well. This particular award was more for how many students took the AP exam.
So it's for taking the AP one?
Yes, yeah, taking the APCSP exam.
But is it based on having females take the AP?
Yeah, I'm sorry, females, yes, yeah, the over the 50% mark on that, yes.
Over 50%?
Yes.
Okay.
Or maybe it's 50% exactly.
Something like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And we're actually probably going to beat it again this year as well, because we just have really high numbers again.
But starting off, we're having non.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a long one, okay. That's, I was just curious, thank you.
Thank you, awesome. Appreciate you guys taking the time to come out here today to show us this and talk about it.
Appreciate it.
All right, public comments, welcome to the meeting of the Board of Education. If anyone wants us to address the Board this evening, please see our recording secretary to submit a form for addressing the Board. Please put your full name and address on the form. Do we have any for today?
We do not.
Okay, then I will spare everybody the indignity of me reading the rest of this. All right, BPS Partners, Mr. Drew Ray, are you hiding back there? Good seeing you, sir.
Likewise. Good evening, everyone. Shout out to the Computer Science Program, that's a pretty awesome award. How's it going? Been seeing you a while. First, I wanted to extend, good evening, sorry. First, I wanted to extend a special congratulations to BEA members Lisa Hapfield, Monica Hubbell, on their nominations for the King County Educator of the Year Award. When your own peers nominate you for an award like that, it's a powerful acknowledgement of the profound impact you've had on your students and colleagues. Both Lisa and Monica are incredibly vital parts of our educational community, and I'm thrilled to see them recognized for their commitment to our profession. Second tonight, big night tonight, we will be swearing in the winners of the April 1st BPS 101 School Board Election, Kristin Gerrels, Erin Kilburg, Craig Meadows, and Katie Swasecki. That means that this will also be the last board meeting for RJ, Mathis, and Sue Locke. To RJ and Sue, a simple thank you is not enough to express our appreciation for the time and energy you've devoted to your roles on the Board and in support of our school district. I'm sure serving on the Board of Education has at times felt like a thankless task, and at other times been incredibly rewarding. It's not an easy position, so for both of you to have dedicated yourselves to this work, I extend my deepest gratitude and thank you for your service to the district. With that said also, congratulations to Craig and Erin on their reelection to the Board, and a heartfelt welcome to our newest Board members, Kristin and Katie. Hi, how's it going? The Batavia Education Association is thrilled with the outcome of the April 1st election, and I think that this new Board will have a healthy mix of perspective and experience that will be of a benefit to all of us. And I'll talk more about this at our upcoming May Board meeting, but if you'll recall, last year's May Board meeting at Batavia High School, the BEA expressed their appreciation for the administration and Board's recommitment to improving our educational environment by addressing concerns related to trust, transparency, and communication. I truly believe in my heart of hearts that we have been moving in the right direction this year. With that in mind, what I want to say to all of you as members of the Board, both veterans and new, and incoming for that matter, is this, you have a partner in the Batavia Education Association. While you face the incredibly difficult task of balancing the interests of all district stakeholders, it is vital that we continue to lean into our collaborative structures to ensure that educator voice, those professionals who work with the students every day, the people on the front lines, continues to guide the decision-making process. And let's not forget, every decision we make as a district should lead back to our students. We are all here because public education is important, and I think you'd agree that our number one goal is to provide a welcoming and robust educational experience for our students, and to simply be there for every single student in the district. And the best way to do that is by working together. So again, congratulations to the incoming Board members and to the Board as a whole. The BEA is looking forward to continuing to work with all of you. Let's meet the moment with courage and care. Before I wrap up, Tom, you reminded me, I didn't have this on my prepared comments here, but we do also have our May 8th Retirement and Recognition Ceremony. At Enticing Cuisine, I forwarded the invitation to Tom, so hopefully he will pass that along to everybody. And we look forward to seeing you, it's a good time, good food, good memories, it's a lot of fun. So that's all I have for tonight, go Bulldogs, Happy Earth Day, solidarity forever with our brothers and sisters in Bespa, and congratulations on your new contract. Good night and good luck, thank you.
Next is Bespa President Sue Bottomman, or Kevin Bottomman, Sue. Is Kevin back here somewhere? There you are, Kevin.
Good evening, everyone, nice to see you all again. My comments will be brief, because I'm going to step aside and let Jillian step up and address you. As you know, my personal circumstances kept me from participating in the talks on the new collective bargaining agreement, but other members of the Executive Board, primarily Laura Visillo, Sharon Motowski, and our Treasurer, who joins me here tonight, Jillian Thorwood, participated in, with members of the administration, a couple of members of the Board, in completing those talks. Jillian's here to speak to that agreement and that effort. I will step aside, and then Jillian, if you will take over at this point, Jillian Thorwood.
Hi, good evening, thank you for having me. So I was one of the main leaders that was in charge of negotiations, along with, there were nine negotiation team members, along with Susan from IEA. We worked for four and a half days, and we had with the administration, and then we had Rob and Craig both alternating days with us, and so thank you for doing that for us. The negotiations were smooth, both sides had similar suggestions and thoughts on contract changes. We were pleased with the results of our three-year contract, we went from a five-year to a three-year contract, so everyone is very excited about that. Our contract, which we, Tony and I have talked about this, passed our ratification unanimously. Every single person in the union that attended the meeting voted yes for it, so we're super excited about that. Some highlights from our new contract include competitive compensation for all support staff, additional pay for paraprofessionals in the DO and ILP programs. We have 403B match, which we did not have before, so we now join our partners with BEA in that great accomplishment. We have new subcommittee that's going to be updating our training and starting a mentoring program, which we did not have before, so we're very excited about that. Along with the joint committee looking and revamping job descriptions, along with evaluations to bring them up to date for all of our members. We will be working with the administration on that, and we're very excited. A dedicated time to all paraprofessionals, which not everyone had that time before, to collaborate with our BEA friends and work together to achieve the best goal for our students. And then we had clarity for administration and staff on evaluation versus progressive discipline. There was kind of a little bit of a confusion there, so we wanted to clear that up for everyone, so they understood. More details about the work calendar, we talked a lot about work calendar, and about how many days everybody had, how many train days, and that was really important for our members, they wanted to be able to know what their calendar would look like going forward. And then we updated, my biggest excitement, I guess, because I'm a secretary, we're now administrative assistants, so we're very excited that we have a modern-day name of administrative assistants across the Board. Overall, we are very pleased with the final results of the negotiation. I wanted to say thank you to the administration and the Board for your support through this process, it was a great experience. And then we are very, we're looking forward to working with the administration on these joint committees for job descriptions, evaluations, trainings, and mentoring program, along with a variety of other things over the next three years. So thank you.
Thank you.
My, if I may also add to that, excuse me, that the contract, I think, was the fruit of efforts that really started more than a year ago, and reflects the improved relationships between Bespa and administration. It really has been a new day, so to speak, with those relations and the efforts, working collaboratively. I think a big part of that are the monthly meetings that the Bespa Board has with the R-Jack team here. And what I, what I think that this new contract really helps with, or sets the stage for, is the next contract that will come up three years from now. It really does mark a new phase. The last contract, which was a five-year deal, really left many people in Bespa and outside of Bespa with a bad feeling about where relationships stood between a district and its workers. This new contract is a different story, and as we talked about at Bespa, we really believe that it sets a nice foundation for when this contract reaches its term, and the next round of talks begin on the next collective bargaining agreement. It will be on a firm and solid foundation, and the group that does that will be in a very good position. So thank you for everyone who had a hand in putting this one together, it is very much appreciated, and we think we look forward to going forward together. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, next is consent agenda. According to our Board policy, we designate a portion of the agenda as consent for those items that usually do not require extensive discussion before Board action. These items are generally routine recurring and can be grouped together for efficiency. Brad, what, no, we're doing, moving them toward the end for a little bit of celebration. I asked and clarified, I should have announced it. Unless you were ready to go right now, are you ready? Got a little celebrating to do at the end, so, okay. Brad, as a change of pace, would you like us to walk us through it?
Sure, the consent agenda has a number of items, including 5.1, the approval of our February 18th closed session minutes, 5.2, the approval of our March 18th, 2025, meeting minutes, and the closed session meetings is 5.3. The approval of our April 8th special meeting minutes is 5.4. 5.5 is the closed session from that night. 5.6 is our monthly personnel report. 5.7 is the approval of our payroll and bills. 5.8 is accepting donations, both from our Rotary Club and Amy Flanagan, thank you very much. 5.9 is our classroom use agreement with Mid Valley Special Education Cooperative, which we're a part of. 5.10 is our approval of our food service contract renewal. 5.11 is the approval of our K-8 meal prices, which have to increase. 5.12 is the award of our copy paper bid for next year. 5.13 is the approval of our stop-loss insurance contract. 5.14 is the approval of the textbook, The Language of Composition, for AP Lang. 5.15 is putting the textbook, Every Falling Star, on display for our freshman English class. 5.16 is accepting the official canvas of votes. And finally, 5.17 is the approval of the consent agenda.
Well done, Brad, anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do. So 5.9, the Mid Valley, is renting the high school able room, how often do they use that room? And is it during school hours or after hours?
Yeah, it's every school day, it's their classroom that they house there. So every school day, they don't do things after school or beyond the school day.
Summertime too, they're not there?
Nope, they host ESY, the summer programming, at a different location.
And then 5.12 is the copy paper, have we ever used that vendor before, Carvy?
No, that would be a first time.
And then 5.15, this is for freshman English?
Yeah, freshman English.
And then one last one is, just out of curiosity, for the personnel report, the staff hiring of Amy Leakley. This always says to be determined, is that because it's going to be a new school year? Or is that because our, like, year's service, or?
That one, I wish Steve was here, I don't know the answer to that, but we'll get it to you.
Okay, thanks. That's all I got.
Anyone else?
I have one comment on item 5.11, the K through 8 meal price increase. I just want to point out that, you know, the cost of goods and food and services is on everybody's mind these days. And that increase is only 10 cents. So that's pretty modest compared to where some things are, so I wanted to say good job to our team. I think we're providing good value in that regard, so good job on that.
Rob? Had a couple of questions about the stop-loss insurance contract. Is the vendor that we went to, is that our current vendor, or is that a new vendor?
Yeah, that's the current. Josh knows more about that one than I do, so.
So yes, that's our current vendor.
Okay, and maybe just a couple, what was the, there was eight vendors looked at, what was the reasons we?
Went with this one?
Yeah.
This one was actually slightly higher in cost than a new one. The difference was, though, this one looks back six years, whereas the other one looks back only 12 months. So if a claim didn't come in that, in a, medical claims sometimes come in late, then we would have been at a loss. So that's why we went with this one.
And then, is it just normal practice to do one-year contracts, or is there any advantage to doing multi-year?
When it comes to stop-loss, generally we're looking at things a year at a time, because of the changing nature of our claims. So sometimes we entertain multi-years we have in the past, and sometimes we don't. It really depends on what's going on in our claims history and what the issues are. So it's very situation-specific.
Okay, so it's advantageous for us?
Right now, yeah.
To do the one-year?
And last year, we got a really good rate, this year it's not bad. And that's the, it's insurance on insurance. So depending on how we perform, that's how we get these rates, so, thank you.
Could you just, because insurance is pretty confusing. Stop-loss insurance is?
Yeah, so basically, we're a self-funded insurance plan. That means all the medical bills get paid out of our account, right? So if a large claim comes in, this puts a limit on that claim, so that this company pays those bills, instead of us paying those bills. So basically, it's insurance against a catastrophic event on someone on our insurance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved by Raquel.
Second.
Second by Erin. Cindy, please lead us in our roll call vote.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Kilburg?
Yes.
Sliger?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Mathis?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Passes, thank you. Under reports, Tom, would you like to lead us through the reports?
Yes, so we are presenting our monthly reports of FOIA requests. This month had a little larger volume than normal, but other than that, we were able to grant all the requests. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay.
I have a weird question that I wasn't going to ask, but I decided to.
Now you're going to?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Bang, my friend.
If I was, if someone was so inclined to find out who an anonymous requester was, would they be able to request that via FOIA?
That is a good, interesting question.
No, because a FOIA is for a public body, and so.
No?
Waiting to ask that question, haven't you?
I, I just, I've never seen such an amount of anonymous requests in there.
Have we gotten anonymous before?
This, in my recollection, is the very first time we have ever seen anything like this before.
Because I asked, I thought this was.
I didn't even know you could submit a request anonymously, I'm going to be sending a lot now.
There are some schools of thought, but we're sticking with a safer approach for the district responding.
There's nothing against it, no challenges. Okay, Tony, Treasurer report.
Mr. Kilburg asks me every month if there's anything anomalous to report on the Treasurer's report. And indeed, this month, there is nothing anomalous to report, so the usual things are here.
I thought you were going to just kill us there.
No. It's Sue's last meeting, so, yeah.
Now what?
Nothing new, okay. Any questions on nothing new?
No.
Sue, you sufficiently covered with the move onto the next agenda. Okay. Item 6.3, committee updates. Anybody have any committee updates? Okay, Raquel.
So Plaque had a meeting last Thursday, kind of went over the ISB professional development requirements, there's a minimum of two training sessions to teachers who interact with Yale students. So they're kind of saying, do they want these sessions to be during department meetings for grades 6 through 12, or staff meetings for elementary, remote trainings, and also, there is no time required for the trainings. Like, so like, training doesn't have to be an hour, it can be 20 minutes, 30 minutes. So that's that. County Institute Days for staff learnings and trainings, do they organize those by buildings, or what the teachers teach? And they give them three options, like a conference, meet with a team slash PLC, or attend district-approved professional learning. They also give an update, and I think this is kind of important, for SIGDIS Pro update. And they kind of found that Black Mel students in BPS have a four-times chance of being labeled with a disability, whether that's emotional or behavioral. So this is a system problem, they are examining our systems, and the hypothesis is maximizing corn instructions for the Black Mels, and we're seeing progress in pressing that. So that's kind of good news. So sent out to elementary swap dates for Illinois literacy training, they picked July for their retreat date, and then they shared the PLC, I'm sorry, the Plaque dates for next year, and they are meeting on the same days as CAC and Student Services, in case they ever want to potentially combine meetings with CAC or Student Services, if they have a common theme in them. And that's all.
Okay, anyone?
So stipend committee met, I think there was, there was a thought that we could wrap up our work and approve all the stipends at the last meeting, but there were some more questions that needed to be investigated. So we're going to do that, do that due process work, and we have a meeting early May, I think May 3rd, and we should be wrapped up by then. But my comment here really is, I appreciate the thoroughness, the thoroughness that is going on with these evaluations of these requests, they're not being taken, you know, lightly. It's, there's really some real work going into investigating, getting feedback, benchmarking in certain cases, the requests, so I appreciate the thoroughness.
Any others?
I just, I'm on the Insurance and Benefits Committee. They have two pretty important meetings, and they might even hold more if they need to. They've got some important topics to discuss, that they're trying to complete by the end of this year. So I'm just throwing it out there that they've got a meeting next week, and then I think one following, two weeks after that, that if a Board member is able to be assigned to that pretty quickly, it'd probably be a good idea to have somebody there.
Unless you want to volunteer to.
RJ, I'm continuing beefy through the end of the year.
Oh, no.
Not unheard of for you to continue your committee work.
They're taking my badge, so I won't.
You should let him.
I'll look for Tom about it.
Josh already said his goodbyes to me, so. I don't think I could go through those goodbyes again. Too hard the first time.
All right, any others? Otherwise, I'm going to admit.
Do you want to make a comment about this? This is new, right, like this update here?
Yeah.
With this information?
Yep. So, this is the second month, I believe, we're trying this, the second board meeting. Or if you recall, when we would do committee report-outs, we would come back to, like, policy committee report-out, and they kind of, there was a sense of redundancy after some conversation we had about that. And so, we thought, well, it'd be nice maybe to put it all together in one spot. Because under Board Comments, I think sometimes we were also having some committee discussion updates. So, we have it all here, but also, this gives an opportunity for the administration chairs to assist with some of the committee information being kind of publicly displayed, you know, as part of the conversation as well.
Rob, thank you for pointing it out.
I have CAC and Equity up there. I'm dealing with, like, a nasty migraine, so I don't, sorry, I might be kind of lit. But CAC had their last meeting. I know you missed out, Brad. But they had their last meeting. As soon as I was getting down all of the different acronyms, we're like wrapping up the year. But they have developed a new document that will actually be tested out by one of the new programs for ELA. This is where, when we are having those field tests for any new resources, you know, assault teams and anyone who is going through those pre-implementation stages can go ahead and give their feedback and really have a collective way to kind of see how it's working for everybody and what tweaks might need to be made. So, that was approved and will be utilized, like I said, by the K through five ELA. With that, they voted to go ahead with the field test. They do want to have an option to possibly field-test a second publisher. There were some concerns around that. But I think that the idea is, you know, you don't want to, okay, the one happens after that one or after that one. But they seem to have a good relationship together on the CAC team just to really kind of keep it streamlined and just allow to hear voices, and hopefully, this will be the one that goes through. So, that looked good. For math at RMS, that's looking good. And they're going to move forward to pay and get materials for the new Eureka program. And then, I don't know if Brad, do you have any update, but the social studies, I think that's K through five, right? That one was like, we weren't sure where that was going at the time, and they were going to have a subcommittee meeting. Was that done?
We met today.
Okay.
So, we had a half-day meeting today. We talked through, like, how do we get to next steps? How do we seek feedback from the staff that piloted? So, we have a plan for seeking some feedback and then a recommendation for CAC to consider, probably at their June meeting, to keep the work moving forward.
Okay, I think I might have hit. Superstem is doing great for science. I think that's my notes that I took. Then Equity was like one of the shortest meetings ever. We, there was a request from Student Services Committee to have Equity take a look at and help spread the word on feedback. Tommy, I don't know if you can explain it better, but ISB is updating their S E L standards. And this is kind of going into the process of that as well as more P D, correct? To kind of feed and.
It's all part of S E L?
Yeah, got it. It's all aligned, and with the S E L standards being updated, it's aligned in all the shifts that we're making to try and continue to push our tier-one, you know, systems that we've been putting in place. And like you said, the Student Services Team asked if the Equity Committee could provide feedback after reviewing all their work. So, they got a Google form. Yep.
I think their last meeting is May, so they're not done yet.
Any others before I fess up that I didn't make rack this week and ask Tony or Josh to give me a little, give a little update?
I just have a quick question.
Or, or Rob, you can give it if you like.
Well, that's why I brought this up, because it's kind of summarized right there, so I didn't want to just repeat it.
You could just read it.
Yeah, I could have.
If no highlights, everybody can read, so.
That's okay. I just had a quick question with the CAC. The ELA, what grade was that for? For the field test, they want to do that?
K through five.
K through five.
But we had a K-12 team, but we're at kind of a different place with both the secondary level and the elementary level. So, we have a team working on the elementary, and we're continuing professional development and some work on the secondary as well. So, eventually, you'll see more on what's happening with secondary in the ELA.
All right, thank you very much. Wrap-up for the committee updates. All right, item seven point one, approval of new collective bargaining agreement with Bespa. Tom, do you want to walk us through that?
Yes, so I think we heard some of the highlights from both Kevin and Jillian. And, you know, the one comment I'll just add is, I think it was an awesome process in showing that both teams had a lot of similar, if not identical at times, priorities in trying to bring forward a really healthy contract, but also one that supports our employees and supports the work that they do for our students and the level of collaboration in that. So, really nice job. I'll turn it over to Tony. Tony acted as our chief negotiating officer, so.
Tony, you're going to take it away.
I don't have much to add. I think Jillian and Kevin did a really nice job of explaining the components of the contract. Say that we're really excited about it, too. This will, I believe, help us with recruitment and retention of members of this group. And obviously, this, education doesn't happen every day without their assistance. This wouldn't work without them. And so, we believe that this contract honors that work and puts us in the, heading in the right direction, so we're excited about it.
All right, any board questions, comments? Rob, anything you want to add, because you were there?
No, I guess I'll just echo. It was very collaborative, and there was mutual respect demonstrated from both sides throughout at least the negotiations I saw. So, that was very positive. We used a, it was new to me, but it used a interest-based bargaining framework, which I think really helped frame the discussions that we had. So, that was very positive. And I guess, you know, shout-out to Tony, we lost our, I forgot the title, the facilitator that we had. He was a federal employee, and, you know, there was some cuts that happened in the federal government. So, we, we lost his services, and Tony stepped in, I think, and fulfilled that role, so appreciate that.
I helped a little bit, yeah, I appreciate that, but I would have to say a lot of credit is due to our attorney, Justin Petraka, and his expertise and experiences, and then the Bespa's unit-served director, Susan Thorson, she stepped up, too.
Yeah, really helped make that stuff work, so we really appreciate their contributions. Team effort.
It was a team.
All right, any other questions?
Well, I just have a comment that I'm really happy to really, to see that this went through and so smoothly and to hear from Kevin and Jillian that you really feel like this is like a new foundation, especially going forward into the next years and the next contract. You know, when I got on the board, there was, you know, I was in schools, and I was hearing a lot, especially from Bespa, just kind of feeling a little left out and just kind of pushed aside and upset, set about the five-year, not knowing that what was lying ahead with COVID and everything. But I'm really happy to hear that the work that's being done together by admin and by Bespa to really, like, strengthen that relationship, and that it seems like a lot of voices were heard. So, I really am excited for that, and I'd love to hear that you really, like, that foundation is so important. So, I'm happy to hear about the hope that everyone's feeling right now.
And I guess I'll just echo that. So, you know, contract negotiations can be very divisive, and they can be damaging to the culture of any institution where it's occurring. So, to have both sides participate in good faith, to work hard for a common goal of a fair contract for both sides, is outstanding. And to have Bespa tell us that 100% of their members ratified is probably unprecedented. And it is a very diverse group of constituents that you represent, so that's just really exciting to hear. And, you know, Mr. Ray in his comments talked about a culture of collaboration. I can just say, in my four years, that I don't think we've ever been in a better spot with all our partners as far as communicating. And what I'm excited about now is that we all can put our eyes on serving students. And so, I'm really excited about the work ahead, because we're all in this together now, and we're ready to get to work. So, congratulations to all parties involved in the negotiation. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve a collective bargaining agreement with Batavia Educational Support Association for the 2026 through 2028 fiscal years.
So moved.
So moved by Rob.
Second.
Second by RJ. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Ma?
Yes.
Mathis?
Yes.
Kilburg?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Haralandu?
Yes.
Sliger?
Yes.
Meadows?
Thank you. Next is public hearing and operation of the school calendar waiver. Brad, would you please explain this item and conduct the hearing?
Sure, we are seeking a waiver from the State Board of Education to craft our calendar a little bit differently than is allowed by the different machinations of school calendaring. It's actually a pretty complex process to create a school calendar and get that approved by the state. One of the ways that we are kind of banking time is that there's a minimum school day, and if you go over the minimum school day of five hours, you can bank that time and use it, but only in half-day increments. So, if you look around at different school calendars, for instance, just to the north of us, they have a number of half-days, typically about one per month, and they're using banked time in order to do that. Well, half-days are really difficult on our families, so about five years ago, we went through this waiver process, as did Tuofo, who was kind of a model of ours on this process. And they, we asked the state to approve us using that banked time in a full-day increment. And we do that because it's easier for our parents, and half-days are really difficult for childcare at elementary, and we have a lot of kids unattended at home, and also, it's better for our learning, too. So, we're invested in adult learning, which we are. We want to make sure we're providing the best learning environment. So, when you teach for four hours and then you have to go into a P D session, it's not the best environment. So, this waiver allows us to do this in a full-day increment. So, if you were looking at the school calendar, last Friday was a SIP day, not an S two day. We call it an S two day, because people don't know what school improvement days are. But on the inside, behind the scenes, it's focused on school improvement and the work that we're doing to support and better our students. So, that waiver is expiring, so we need to re-up it and renew it. So, as a part of that process, we contact all of the legislators in Illinois and say that we're interested in doing this. We talk to our associations to let them know that they have ability to weigh in on this. And then, we have to publish in the newspaper that we're holding this hearing. There's a lot of paperwork that goes behind the scenes. So, thank you to Marcia Schuster, who's kind of coordinated this for the C N I Department. And kind of the final piece is that we hold a public hearing to see if anyone wants to comment about why we're seeking this waiver or what that would mean for the district. And then, once we close that hearing and the board approves this, we would send all of that paperwork into the state and get approval to do our calendar the way that we have it planned.
Okay. So, Cindy, do we have any comments from the public as a part of the public hearing?
None at this point.
None at this point. Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I would like to say that I have never been a fan of half-days, you know this, Brad, so I remember doing this five years ago, and I'm a big fan, so I would support this.
Makes a lot of sense to me. Any other questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the application seeking the school calendar waiver.
So moved.
Moved by Raquel.
Second.
Sue, Sue, sorry. Thank you. Second, Aaron, correct?
Correct.
All right, Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Haralandu?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Kilburg?
Yes.
Ma?
Yes.
Mathis?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Sliger?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item seven point three, adoption of resolution to accept the Batavia Bulldog Boosters donation pledge. Mark, would you please come to the podium?
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, this is a longer one. But basically, what this is, is the Batavia Bulldog Boosters is donating. Basically, it's a donation, but it's a pledge over five years. So, they're pledging to donate back to the district $50,000 a year for a new scoreboard at the stadium. So, you can see in the attachments that the letter from the board president, the booster board president is in there, and the other one is for basically this board to sign. So, this is a very similar agreement, and some of you may remember this, but, thank you, Sue. Back when, there was an agreement between the board and the boosters for the turf at the high school. So, it was a very, I mean, the agreement is very similar. The amounts are different, but it's both for the stadium. I don't know what other, if there's other information that you want from me. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, and I also have Dave Andrews, who's my associate principal for operations and athletics at the high school. If there's anything that I cannot answer, I brought him here as well.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have questions. So, what happens if the boosters don't come up with the $50,000 in a year?
What happens? Well, we will be, so as the district, we will be purchasing. So, you'll see in the next action item is for the purchase of the scoreboard and then the work. So, if they do not, I mean, in conversations with them, it is in their bylaws to follow through with all of that. But as far as legal ramifications, you know, I would have, help Tony, ask Tony to help me with this. But really, we, I mean, it's, it's a donation, so they're donating the money. But they did, as an executive board, all vote unanimously to accept this donation to the school district. But let's just say if they didn't, we are still paying the money as a district, and they're donating that money to us then.
So, with the scoreboard, how long is the warranty and what does it cover?
The warranty?
Yeah.
So, oh, on the scoreboard? So, the scoreboard itself, there is a, basically, a two-year warranty on parts, things like that. And then, any installation, there's a one-year warranty on that.
And then, what type of maintenance or upkeep is needed for the new board? And then, who will cover that?
Any upkeep is, would be on the district. So, upkeep would be, you know, if something were, you know, to go wrong with it, it's all LED. So, if something were to go wrong with an LED panel, so there's, off the top of my head, I don't know how many panels are, but the, the board is made up of individual panels that go together. So, if there was something in there, we would, you know, obviously have to fix that for the scoreboard to work. So, you can relate it to basically a light bulb, you know, if you have to replace a light bulb, you're just screwing out the light bulb. This is an actually LED panel that you would have to do maintenance on, or really, the maintenance is not much. It would be if something were to fail to that.
So, the vendor doesn't have any type of service obligation as part of this contract or part of the purchase?
No, it would just be within the warranty. And then, there's approved, you know, there's approved people that work on any of these scoreboards.
So, and then, this is another, so in the agenda, it says that, you know, community and high school events, it says movie nights. And I'm just curious, has there ever been a movie night at BPS? I don't know. I know there's always one in the park.
No, there, yeah. Yeah, there have been.
Dave coordinates.
Dave could probably answer that a little more, so, yeah. Dave, you do have to come up here.
Mr. Andrews, we need you at the microphone, please.
Yes.
I was going to ask Mr. Andrews to go through, it's in here, but, I mean, you could literally read it, I guess, but like, all the different student populations and community members that will benefit from this.
Yeah, as far as the movie night goes, our student council sponsors a movie night every fall in the stadium. And they've done that for as long as I can remember, you know, 15 years at least. They typically rent a company to come in and do a large blow-up screen, and then obviously, project it on there with, you know, the students come, and boosters serve popcorn just out of gratis. And then, you know, the students, you know, lay the blankets down, and they just kind of watch a movie. It could be, you know, just. It could be, you know, just a fun back-to-the, back-to-school type event, kind of a mixer for student council to sponsor for the students. So yeah, we do have movie nights every year for that. As far as everybody else that's involved in the stadium, obviously, we have our major sports, you know, football, soccer, lacrosse, track, that take place for, as far as the high school students in there, they would obviously benefit from this. Scroll back up a little bit, just so I have it in the other way, other way. Yeah, so then we have special events through outside vendors as well. Our BYA sponsors youth football nights there. They call it the under the night's lights, under the lights night. You know, to give all the, you know, the youth football players in the community opportunities to, you know, to participate on the stadium. And obviously, this would definitely enhance that as well, just with the usability of our, our mobile cameras through the huddle system that the boosters also supplies. This integrate, this would integrate directly with that scoreboard. So the kids, you know, get to see themselves on the scoreboard. So they'll, they'll think that's very cool. Obviously, the homecoming dance now for the last couple of years since COVID has been out there. Again, our, the DJ that we use would be able to integrate any special effects with that as well. The marching band obviously uses it, actually, the marching band actually uses the stadium actually more than any other, you know, program in the district, just with their, their summer programs and their practice times. And then they also do the, the very large fall community presentation that, that, it packs the stadium. If anybody's ever been there, it's a pretty amazing, you know, function. So again, that would be an option for them to use for any of their, whether it be their practices, their camps, you know, or that large community band performance. And then obviously, our physical education, you know, students are out there every day, you know, when the weather's nice. It fully integrates into iPads, so teachers can pull up YouTube videos, instructional videos, a scoreboard app, you know? So whatever they're doing on that stadium, you know, for curriculum can also, that can also be displayed onto the, you know, the video board as well. And actually, we have one of these boards in our main gym. And with the help of our tech department, we have actually now been able to integrate our laptops, just like a screen beam like we're doing here with that. So actually, we have teachers now using it in the, in the main gym as well. So we, we have a tried and true method now to be able to help. Again, our baseball team used it actually for practice to, to break down some video. So yeah, so it's, I mean, I don't want to, I don't know if we have an exact number, but pretty much every student in the high school would definitely benefit from it. And then obviously, with all the community partners that, you know, I discussed, it even extends that far as well.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah. So were we, BPS, looking for a new scoreboard? Or is this kind of just falling out of our lap? Hey, we want to do this.
No, we have been looking for a new scoreboard. So there have been, with our current scoreboard, there have been a number of issues at least the past three years. To the point where we've basically done everything that we know and our contractors know to do with it. To the point of really hardwiring it. So there's actually, most scoreboards are wireless. Most of them are wireless. They work off a controller. This one is hardwired because of the age of it. So our maintenance team ran from the press box all the way to the current scoreboard, a hardwire. And I'm not going to say it, and I know Dave's not going to say it, but it, it's working.
Every time we turn it on, we hope it works. It, it's a little bit more part of that, just the scoreboard components are, they are becoming, they are obsolete. And so we've been putting it together with duct tape for the last couple of years, and so we're definitely long overdue for a replacement.
Then like, so one last one, right? So if the turf was a donation, like we kind of did it here, obviously, was the booster successful in repaying us for that term?
Yes, they were.
Oh, yeah. I just want to make sure.
No, those are good questions. I mean, again, I've been working with this booster club now for my 15 years. And they always come up with a very robust wish list, where coaches, you know, supply items that don't get covered onto the regular budgets, you know, for their athletics. And so annually, they submit the wish list. And that can range, depending on district commitments, that ranges anywhere between $50,000 up to $100,000 annually. And they've never not paid their bills, their commitments.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I kind of like on Raquel's one question, I know she asked what happens if they cannot raise the donations? And, you know, are we on the hook for it then? Can you just kind of clarify what that, the risk of that is for us? I mean, what are we, I want to better understand, what are we potentially, what could we be potentially on the hook for from our budget if they can't? I mean, I know you said that's never happened, right? They've never come through without donations. How much are we, where are they at for the full amount needed? I guess at this point, how much have they raised and how much more do they need to raise?
Right now, they have $200,000 in the bank.
Okay.
And then they obviously have $10,000 in scholarships coming up here. They got a, the spring wish list items, they still have to pay off. So they were actually initially ready to write the $200,000 check, just with some estimates of construction and install and just materials. And who knows, again, where the prices are going to lay when we actually get the board. We weren't comfortable with just 200,000. That's why we went up to 250,000. And so the board felt it more comfortable, the booster board felt it more comfortable to let space it out over those five years for that. And a piece, I guess we didn't really talk about it here, is the board is the revenue generator through advertising. And so the goal would be to take the, the hard posters that are in the stadium and obviously, you know, change those over to digital advertising. Yeah, probably not 100%, but again, that will, will have more opportunities for, you know, income, you know, through more sponsorship and advertising. And this board would obviously help that, support that.
They're obviously keeping an eye on the budget, and they're not going to continue to spend over what if they, to be able to meet the payment.
The treasurer is a, is an accountant, and he holds us very accountable. Yes.
This is pretty much exactly the way the turf was handled, right?
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
And that was twice as much.
Yeah, the turf was $600,000 donation.
I, I know, I know a bit about the turf. I think we're just in different times where I think we're just really like, warm, safe, dry is kind of where we're at. And with everything that's costing so much more money, it's just, I just want to make sure that anything that's beyond warm, safe, dry is something that we are definitely okay with.
They're raising the money and paying us back. And so our concern is, can they pay us back?
Yeah, I want to know the rest of it. What if they can't?
I don't think there's any risk.
You're right. The risk is if they can't pay us back, we would owe it because we got to buy the thing up front. So we're entering.
Right.
I mean, one way or the other, if, if, if something unforeseen happens, they're, they're paying off portions of it. And then we're getting a pretty good deal on a brand-new, this is my opinion, brand-new, you know, scoreboard system. You know, so that's, again, my personal view about it. I've seen plenty of times where that has been used. I've also seen in other districts that have utilized the advertising as a way to actually pay for their, their scoreboards in and of themselves, you know? And enter an agreement with some advertising companies or whatever else. So it gives plenty of options there. So like, if something happens on that front, then other avenues could be looked at to help offset the, at least long-term, but, you know, financing issue that maybe the school district could have. With some creative thinking by.
Just by way of example, one of the last, the last couple of payments for the turf field fell in the years where the pandemic hit and the lockdown hit. And then the subsequent year about hybrid. And that severely impacted, obviously, the booster's ability to generate revenue because events weren't being held or they were heavily modified. And it affected their cash flow. And so what we did was we stretched out those payments over a couple more years. They paid all the money in full, but they needed another year, if I recall correctly, to make all the payments. So that's the possibility where we might face it. There was some serious adverse impact on their cash flow. We could stretch that over time.
Thank you.
But you don't necessarily, you know, if they're not willing to donate the money, they're a separate organization. We can't necessarily compel them to. But they're pledging here with faith and credit that they're going to pay us back for these costs.
It usually looks pretty bad on organizations if they raise money for a particular thing and don't actually pay it off. Kind of gets it hard to get money later for other things. So everybody gets a little wounded if they don't pay up. So.
Okay? Any other questions?
Thank you for, to you guys, and thank you to them for kind of working together. I mean, I personally firsthand seen what the field has done to be able to kind of extend the use and the education of the students in the district and provide a lot of opportunities for them. I'm kind of excited to see how Mr. Rowan and team are going to be able to put the probably marching band transgressions on kids up on the big screen and teach them how to do it better and football programs and whatever else. So I think it's a great opportunity to kind of broaden kids' education in different ways. So I appreciate everybody's effort on that.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adopt a resolution to accept the pledge of $250,000 from the Batavia Bulldog Boosters over the next five years.
So moved.
Second by Aaron, second by RJ. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Meadows?
Yes.
Mathis?
Yes.
Kilburg?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next is approval of said digital scoreboard purchase. Mark, would you like to explain it all again?
Not, not really. If you need me to explain something, I, more than, but yeah, this is just, obviously, it has to be in this order. So this is to purchase the scoreboard.
If I could, I, I just have, just one comment I want to make is, I just want to share some gratitude and appreciation for our booster club and parent volunteers for donating that, that type of resource to the district. I've worked in several districts, as you all know, and I just didn't realize how big of a donation they made on the field turf. Now to come back and make a donation of this size for a new scoreboard, I'm just pretty impressed and grateful for that. So that's all I have to say.
I'll make a comment, too, that I appreciate everyone who's worked to maintain the scoreboard, but I have been there on the nights when we're crossing our fingers it's going to start working. So it was at its end of its life cycle. And to receive a donation, so Danielle, you mentioned, you know, we are watching our budget very closely. To, to receive a donation this large, that means we can use our funds on other things that are needed. So I want to also say thank you.
Because it could be one day that, that thing just doesn't work in two years and we're stuck doing something less than whatever this is. You donating pieces of the old scoreboard to people or selling it off as a raffle? Nothing?
Light bulbs?
No.
Missed opportunity there, keychains. All right, anybody have any other questions? I will entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a digital scoreboard for the Batavia High School Stadium from Fair Play in the amount of $171,325. So moved by RJ.
Second.
Second by Sue. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Slager?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Mathis?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kilburg?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Approval of the intergovernmental agreement for electric vehicle charging station at the Batavia High School. Tony?
Uh, this is your approval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Batavia to do, as you stated, install a electric vehicle charging station at Batavia High School. It would be installed in the southwest corner of the school's parking lot. And folks would have an opportunity to bring their electric cars there and charge them. The management of this, the installation would be provided through a grant from the federal government and supported by the city of Batavia. And in the event that after five years, we were no longer interested in offering this charging station to the community, the city of Batavia would remove it and restore the premises to its original state. This is an opportunity to partner with the city of Batavia to support some of their initiatives, particularly around charging electric vehicles and access to those sorts of things. So that we have the infrastructure in place to support families in town and transportation.
Questions?
My one concern or thought was what type of liabilities do we have? I, I see the city ownership in full financial responsibility. That's also for any damage to vehicles, any human injuries that may occur somehow?
It's all incorporated into the agreement, yeah.
Okay.
So it's not just for school people use?
It's for anybody.
Any schmuck off the street can pull in.
Anybody, yeah. And at any time of day, too, for 24 hours a day. Sometimes folks will pull in there, park their car there at night and charge it overnight, and that would be okay, too.
I mean, so the way I understand, this is going to be probably about as far away in that lot from the building as possible. It's almost directly across the street from the fire station, correct?
Right.
Yeah, sure.
And the way I read this is really our responsibility is just to keep the area clean, remove the snow, which we'd be doing anyways, basically, right? So we're not really taking on risk or cost or?
We're not taking on risk or cost, no. This is, it will not cost us anything to do. The one side effect is that, perhaps, is that when we have pretty heavy attended events at the high school, there could be some less parking available. But some people might also use that parking to charge their car. So it might become an advantage in that regard, too. This area was carefully chosen by the city to support infrastructure throughout the city and where people live and where access to these kinds of services are predicted to be necessary. And that's one of the requirements of the grant.
What if I parked there with my regular car and not an electric car?
You.
Will I get a ticket?
Yeah, or you could be towed.
Even on cornball day? I mean, I'm just saying.
It's one of those things that we had talked through, yeah. And just for clarity, whose electricity is supporting this? That's another factor for this, is who's electricity. And one of the reasons why this location is advantageous is because of where the distribution mains are for electricity, and the city handles all that.
They're picking up the electricity running, it's not ours, we're basically.
Not our electricity, no.
Intergovernmental agreement for two parking spaces, effectively. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Batavia for the installation and operation of UV charging stations at Batavia High School.
So moved.
So moved by Rob.
Second.
Second by Danielle, just for some difference in the day. All right, Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Kilburg?
Yes.
Mark?
I can't say no.
Okay.
I'm going to vote no on my last night. Sorry, Tom.
Mathis?
Yes.
He saw it coming.
Meadows?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
All right, item 7.6, authorization to execute contract for natural gas.
Do you want to handle this one, Mark?
Don't vote jump up, it's okay.
I think we got to do it and go on.
Well, we do, we do need to do something. This would be your setting the parameters for us entering into the next contract, depending on market condition.
Correct. So as you can see in this report, we basically had a cost per therm at 27 cents, which is really unheard of. So it was really good for the district for three years. Again, if I would take it back, we would have went for 10 years if we could have. But really, with natural gas, you don't know where it's at. So what we're trying to find out is, working with our advisor, is get the best parameters as far as when is the time to lock in another year? Right now, we have a year of 45 cents per therm, because at the time, a little while ago, that was kind of the best going rate. This is what we're trying to do, the same thing here. So from going from 27 cents to 45 cents, obviously, our natural gas bills are going to go up next year in the tune of quite a bit. But this is why we're bringing this now. So we're trying to find out any way to lower that cost, even into delivery costs. So that's the other piece of this, is you have to pay for the natural gas, the actual terms, and you also have to pay for the delivery fees, too. So this is what, though, it might be, you know, if this is approved, it could be in the next two months. It could be 10 months down the road. But at some point in the next year, we have to go into another. But at some point in the next year, we have to go into another agreement. When that happens, I'll bring that back to the board and then you will agree on what, or you'll vote on what that agreement actually is.
You'll accept it, yeah. So what you're giving the administration, the ability to do is to act, to issue an RFP to go and seek proposals when the market timing is right. And because timing on those sorts of things is really important, you know, they don't offer deals that, you know, take this back to your board in a few weeks and see if it's still, that's not how this works. You're giving parameters to us to seek for the right timing and execute that, we'll report the results of that back to you as long as it's within these dates and it doesn't exceed these prices. So but we would use our judgment and the judgment of our advisors to find the best rate given market conditions. And things are fluctuating right now as you would expect, given what's going on in our economy.
Any questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion to authorize the administration to accept and execute a competitively bid contract for the delivery portion of natural gas basis for the term not to exceed 48 months beyond the current contract's expiration of June 30th, 2026 at a cost not to exceed point 0.05 terms, that's dollars. I will further entertain a motion to authorize the administration to accept and execute a separate agreement for the natural gas commodity NYMEX for the term not to exceed 24 months beyond the current expiration date at a cost not to exceed 50 cents per therm. These contracts may be executed at any time through January 1st, 2026, and the final pricing and contract terms will be reported to the board at the next regular meeting following execution.
So moved.
So moved by Raquel.
Second.
Second by Rob. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Meadows?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Mathis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of the FY26 staffing plan. Tom, will you lead us through this?
Sure. This is our general FTE request for expansion and posting and hiring for next school year. And we have two FTE built in as a buffer for that request in case we have some move-ins, changes that happen to, you know, move some of our section sizes at different buildings. This 2.0 FTE that we use as an extra FTE has been something the district has been using for several years now and seems to have worked as our, as a good cushion.
All right, any questions?
Maybe a quick comment, Tom, is this, we may not necessarily fill these positions, right?
The 2.0 FTE, correct. That's definitely something we would not use unless we needed to, but some of the other FTE built into the memo is, are the sections that we are anticipating opening for next year.
And that you'll fulfill, okay. Because I thought a couple, at least one of them we talked about would be challenging to find qualified people.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? I will entertain a motion to approve FY26 staffing plan as presented. So moved by Danielle.
Second.
Second by Aaron. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Mathis?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That was all for our action items. All right, celebrating exiting members, could our student ambassadors please approach the program podium?
Can we let them do the presentation first?
Yep, if you guys can do your presentation first, which is saving you time of walking back and forth.
All right, I know this is a long awaited presentation. Ambassadors, but we actually, we actually covered today, so lots, lots have been going on. Personally, I love covering sports, so you know, we've got baseball going on, tennis, softball, and also lacrosse. They actually have a game tomorrow against Wheaton Warrenville South. And track and field has been going on always, I have to mention that. Guys had a meet at Wheaton North and then the girls had a meet today, which I actually came from. So shout out to track and field. Also, girl soccer, it's something cool. They actually had, recently had their teachers appreciation night and it's cool because they could, seniors get to honor one of their favorite teachers from high school. So I thought that was super cool.
And this month, we had a lot of exciting field trips, two of which that me and Zara attended. One for a leadership class, which we went to the Fox Valley Special Recreational Center. To people who don't know about it, it's basically a program that helps connect people with people with disabilities and we go and do activities. This is actually our second time going. This time, we painted rocks with them and we colored and decorated cookies. It was really fun, interactive, lots of laughter. And then another active, field trip that we went to was for the Honors Society French. We went to Watola Middle School. There, we were teachers for the day. We taught them numbers, animals, and just it was a really fun day. And I'm so excited that we got the opportunity to go and do all that we did.
And I also have to mention, actually, I went on three field trips. I went to the zoo. Actually, I took AP Bio for going to the zoo. So yeah, so our AP environmental science classes and our AP bio classes get to this, go to the zoo each year. So it was really fun. It was kind of funny because there's a lot of kindergarten classes and then there's juniors and seniors, but we all enjoyed watching the animals and everything. It was a fun time. Also, the Spanish classes went to like a Spanish restaurant the day before that and we went, I was in Spanish last semester, which that was delish. So the field trips are super fun. We've had a lot going on at the school, but generally the season is very like academic heavy because school year's wrapping up. Today, the juniors have the ACT, which was so fun. And then next month, we have advanced placement testing. So Mr. Ozark was here talking about that for CS, but all the other classes have that. So students are definitely working on their academics, it's super heavy. But Amnesty, which is a club at the high school, had this like jamnasty event where basically they have a bunch of different like student music groups come together and play music just to like build the community, which is cool. And then this weekend is prom. It's like unofficially Rapunzel themed. It's going to be super cool. We're all getting really excited, but we have a spirit week, so people are dressing up even in spite of heavy academics.
Okay, and you know me, I had to do my fine arts slide, so it'll turn in a second. There was last week, the spring play, Wrinkle in Time. It was pretty great. There was a lot of flying, as you can see right there. There was a fine arts festival where there was groups from middle school and the high school and they just kind of performed a bunch of music. You could walk around, do art, see art, I don't know, everything to do with fine arts. And there was a choir concert. There's one act coming up soon that are student directed performances. I think they're next week. Band students got back from New York. They went over spring break, it was pretty great. And there was some all city band and orchestra concerts, which is basically like everywhere from fifth grade to the top band at the high school, all, or orchestra at the high school all performs like after one another and they just all get to kind of hang out. And it was great and it was so fun. Yeah, that's us.
And also, as some of you may or may not know, this is me and Jerit's last meeting, so we wanted to say a huge thank you to everyone. Like it's been such an honor serving the board and we have had so much fun like bringing presentations up and it's been amazing, so.
Do you want to say anything besides that?
No, just thank you to everyone and Mr. Kim, especially to you as well. Yeah, we're super grateful that we've had this opportunity and yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if you two would stay there for a second.
Hey, Jerit.
Don't go far. Can't get away that fast. Let's try.
I didn't hear.
So I'm going to say something, you guys can stand, where's a good spot, right over here maybe?
Okay.
So I, I'm going to speak on behalf of the board and I just want to say I was part of the committee that chose you to be student ambassadors, if you remember.
Yeah.
That was at the height of COVID, so we did it virtually.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that.
So I want to say on behalf of the BPS 101 Board of Education, we extend our deepest gratitude to Ms. Jerit Alingaro and Zara Ahmed for your hard work and leadership as student ambassadors. Your growth as leaders over the past three years has been undeniable and you have inspired others to engage, lead, and advocate for positive change. In particular, your invaluable contributions in the development of the district's five-year strategic plan will be a legacy that endures. And you were both front and center in driving that important work. You both facilitated small group discussions with members of our community, providing invaluable insight into the needs and wants of those living in the district. You also provided leadership on the steering committee, a body that included faculty, staff, administration, the superintendent, various community leaders, and Board of Education members. Others your age might have been intimidated to lead those discussions or sit on that committee, but you were both strong leaders who gave powerful voice to the student perspective. Your insights and commitment have helped shape the future of BPS 101 for the better, ensuring the goals and decisions of the district reflect the needs and aspirations of those we serve. As we move forward, please know your legacy as student ambassadors will continue to inspire future leaders. Thank you, Zara and Jerit, for your service. We will miss seeing you every month, but we are proud of all you've accomplished and we wish you the best in your next chapter. You will always be Bulldogs and you will always be, I'm getting emotional here, be a cherished part of the BPS 101 family. So thank you so much for your service. We have some plaques for you.
Wow, crazy. Oh my goodness.
Here you go. Why don't you hold those up so everybody can see that?
Thank you so much.
So thank you so much.
And I want to say huge thank you for this, it's really an honor.
And I think we're also asked to share about some of our future plans.
Beat me to it, thank you. I was going to ask, what's your next steps?
For, for me, I'm pursuing a global studies major at U of I, University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, and I'm also planning to do pre-law track, so that's exciting. And then this summer, I'll be close by, I'll be interning at Illinois Representative Matt Hanson's office, so if anyone has any constituent questions, I'll be there. So yeah.
I like Zara, I'm also going to U of I and I'm also in a law track, I'll be majoring in political science. And yeah, this summer I'm just working, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, next is our board members. I'm going to get Sue a tissue.
Get Aaron a tissue.
So I'm just going to speak, I'm going to celebrate a little bit about Sue and RJ, but I'm going to start with Sue first. So I've, I've had the good fortune of knowing Sue for my entire duration on the board and Sue predated me by two years, or were you a whole cycle before that?
You interviewed you.
Yes, you'd interviewed me. And look what you did.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so.
Well.
How long have you been on a board, Sue?
12.
12 years.
12 years.
Yeah, so I just want to let you know, at least from my perspective, I appreciate your perspective, you know, the advice that you've particularly given me over time and all of you, like all the things that, that you've really done because really in, there's a lot that's happened in the past 12 years. I mean, you were speaking to me a little earlier about some challenges earlier on, some things that we're going to be potentially facing later. We went through a whole global pandemic, a couple of teacher contracts, a couple of Bespa contracts and so, and you know, referendums, though they didn't go the way we wanted, it was very much kind of appreciated on the effort that you kind of put in. And I just want to say, at least from my part, and I'm sure for the rest of the board, we thank you very, very much for your time and I know the community absolutely appreciates your time and effort and involved. And I wish you the best on your next endeavors. Don't worry, you have a little plaque down here too, I'll get it to you in a minute. RJ, thank you for your time and effort. You've been here for one term, but you know, early, I wanted, I was thinking earlier about the things a lot of people see in their kind of singular terms and you've been through them all, I think, in one singular term. You know, there was some real good guidance that I think you, along with the other board members, but you in particular gave a really kind of good level head about a lot of the things that you talked about, your kind of commentary and your things that I always knew you were thinking about, everybody else and those in the room and not in the room, and that you were really trying to make sure that the good decisions were the best decisions we could do at the time, even if sometimes they were challenging to be done. I will say on a slightly humorous note, I will miss, unless you do it again later today, for the not, you know, voting yes for closing out a meeting or two, you've done that in the past. He wasn't at one and I might have commented at one and he called me up like the day, next day after, he watched the videos like, hey dude, seriously? Because I poked a little fun at him. So thank you for your time and effort. Really, like I said, it, you've accomplished a lot and I appreciate all your time and effort and thoughts you put into that as well, so thank you very much. It's been an honor to serve with you both. We do have a little parting appreciation token, so I will bring that over to you. RJ? Thank you very much, sir. Well observed and appreciated. Yeah. As he runs out the door.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you guys. All right, board comments. Kind of historically speaking and as a matter of tradition, we let our parting board members do their final comments. Which of you wants to go first?
Your choice. Want me to go first?
Does man.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. It's, it's definitely been an honor to be on this board for four years. When I signed up for it, I didn't really have much of a clue what I was getting into. So congratulations to the new people that are now getting into what I didn't know I was getting into. But it's been great, there's, you know, the, I guess just thank you to everybody, this whole group here has been amazing to work with. I have a lot of confidence in the future of the school district. I think that this is a fantastic board to be part of and I did vote for the two people that are joining as well, so I guess I could actually say voted for everyone that's going to be on the board. So maybe that's one side of that.
Thank you.
But all the principals, the faculty, I've talked with so many students over the years and people that have come here and spoken at the meetings, the involvements from these gentlemen here, everyone on the boosters clubs, the, the different committees I've been part of, it's just been amazing that the collaboration is amazing in this town. And I know we just celebrated the, the new Bespa contract, having that, the, the contract with the, the teachers as well, having Drew step up, having you with your new contract. I mean, it's just, I feel really good, I feel like we've accomplished a lot more in a really good spot, so thank you to everyone for letting me be part of that. And thanks to my, my wife and my children for supporting me over these four years. I know they're going to be happy to have me home instead of here, they, they like me, so it's nice. That's all, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, RJ. Sue.
All right. First thing I want to do is thank my family for allowing me this opportunity. It is a big sacrifice and you will find this out, that it does take time away from your family, and so I do appreciate them allowing me the ability to do this. I want to thank Superintendent Kim for his work and our collaboration, working with Dr. Hitchens also for 10 years that she was here and I was on the board. I've got a lot of people that I want to thank, 12 years is a long time. Senior admin, you guys have been wonderful to work with. I probably am going to cry now that you say that. All the staff at RJX, Cindy, Teresa, the BEA, Bespa members, everyone, the staff, teachers, everyone, it's been a wonderful experience. 12, I was thinking about this today, 12 years is a long time. I mentioned this to Cindy when I walked in here tonight. I mentioned this to Cindy when I walked in here tonight. It's almost the time it takes a child to go through our district. And there've been a lot of changes. And one of the things I'm most proud about, Erin asked me this, I think, the other day when we met. When I first got on the board, my son was in fifth grade. Can't believe that. He was piloting a program, glad you remember this, with the iPads. Think about that. None of the classes had computers. The students had computers or anything. My son's class was the first class, they had iPads over at AGS. Then the next year, they had a couple of classes, I think, at Rotolo that used really iPads or maybe, I think it's just iPads still. And then they slowly rolled it in in the middle school and the high school. And I was there the very first day with Dr. Hitchens at the high school when all the students were getting, we were handing out Chromebooks. And now every student in the district has a device. And so that's happened within 12 years. It's a long time, but, I mean, we've been fully integrated for years now. And you think about, how would we have survived COVID if we hadn't done that? And that took a lot of work, not only on staff's part, but also for the board to step up and say, this is something we need to do. And that's one thing I'm very proud that we were able to do. So. The other thing that I want to say is that over the past 12 years, I've worked with a wide variety of members on the board. We all have different opinions, different experiences that we come from. There's one consistent factor that I've always found. And if you can think back 12 years, 10 years, you guys know, there've been a lot of different people on this board. But we've always had one main goal in mind. We want what's best for the kids. It doesn't matter what we, you know, what I want, what you want, whatever. We all want one goal in mind. And if I can leave you with anything, it's just to keep that in mind, that we all want what's best for the kids. And that's why we're here. And that's why we sacrifice all the time that we do. And I urge you to keep that in mind, and the new people too, that may have differences. When I first got on the board, and I think you guys, we were like seven mind, seven people just with the same mind. We all got along. We we knew exactly what everybody was thinking. Boy, we knew what Gaspard was thinking every time, you know? And it's changed, but we still all have one goal in mind. And so just kind of keep thinking that way, if that makes sense. The other thing I wanted to say, and it's gotten better over the years, I think. But when I'm out in the community, I've always had people tell me or say things. They they don't trust the administration. They have problems with, they don't, you know, there's something wrong in the school. They don't believe what's going on or they don't trust people, what they say, what they hear. I am here to tell you that in the 12 years I have been here, I have never heard anyone say anything untoward, anything nefarious, nothing. I have had a positive experience with everyone. And if I ever saw anything that I didn't believe was proper, going out, you know, I would be the first one to stand up and start yelling and screaming. You know me. So I just, it's always bothered me when we get emails about people complaining, things aren't going this way, they're not doing the right thing. Everyone works towards the same common goal. So I wish everyone the best, good luck. But like I said, everybody here does it for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn seen die, which basically means temporarily.
So moved.
So moved by Sue, second by?
RJ.
Well, I killed you, didn't I? So moved by Sue, second by RJ. All in favor?
Aye.
It is now eight thirty-five PM and the meeting is adjourned. We'll take a five-minute break and move right into our special reorganization.
Yeah, it's tough. Did I get demoted?
Demoted. Pay cut.
Is everybody ready? I'm a little nervous now.
You should be.
Let me get my script.
It's harder than it looks, isn't it, sir?
Oh, take it easy. All right, here we go. All right, it is now twenty forty-four, or eight forty-four P M., April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and I call the special meeting for the reorganization of the Board of Education to order. Our very first order of business before we can call the roll is to swear in our new and returning board members as elected in the April first consolidated election. So if we could all come join me at the front of the audience for your swearing in.
Does everybody get sworn in?
No.
No, 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 just you guys have a rule.
So the camera will be there, so just kind of, camera's there.
If you just repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Potavious School District.
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of a member of the Board of Education of Potavious School District.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I further swear that.
I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for BPS one-on-one.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for BPS one-on-one.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community schools to advance the vision for Potavious School District.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community schools to advance the vision for Potavious School District.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Congratulations. Okay. All right, to move forward from here, Cindy, would you please call a roll?
Rob Arlandu.
Here.
Kristen Gerros.
Here.
Raquel Gonzalez Thomas.
Present.
Erin Kilburg.
Present.
Craig Meadows.
Present.
Danielle Slager.
Present.
Katie Swisicki.
Present.
The role of the board president is to run the meeting as one of the president's primary responsibilities, and we are currently without a board president. This is the reorganization meeting. In order to launch this meeting, someone must be selected as the temporary president and temporary secretary. Therefore, I would like to entertain a motion to appoint Tom Kim as president pro temp and Cindy Rodriguez as secretary pro temp.
Second.
All right, motion by Rob Arlandu and second by Katie Swisicki. Okay, thank you. All right, for this, we can do a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Holly and Cindy, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Education. If anyone wishes to address the board this evening, please see our recording secretary to submit a form for addressing the board. Please put your full name and address on the board, on the form. In general, the board will not answer questions or engage in a dialogue during public comment. This does not mean we do not take your concerns or comments seriously. The board values active community participation in the district's endeavors and encourages people to engage with the district using the appropriate channels and systems designed with your input in mind. Board members are not involved in the day-to-day operations of the district and cannot engage in district business individually. If you have specific questions or would like to further engage with the district, you may submit your questions using the link on the website and the appropriate staff member will communicate with you. Our BPS one-on-one communications manager, Holly Deitchman, will now explain the procedures for public comment and call up the speakers.
Thank you. We have one public speaker, Chris Lowe. Will you please approach the podium? You'll have three minutes to speak. I will show a three-minute timer up on the board, and we ask that you address everyone in the room with respect and civility. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, staff, and community. As a former board member and as a parent and advocate, I want to first congratulate our newly sworn-in members. Your election represents progress and with it, the community's mandate for change. To our returning members, the clock is ticking. When I was on this board over two years ago, our board and district committed to addressing systemic inequalities. Yet a year after passing a strategic plan, we still lack the dashboard to track progress. Marginalized students, Black, Latinx, LGBTQ+, disabled, and others cannot afford delays masked as caution or concern for causing more harm. Their trauma is not theoretical. It is daily, documented, and demands action. I know this work is hard. I served eight years fighting to move this district from denial to accountability. Progress requires four things: a clear goal, resources with authority, a deadline, and the fortitude to enforce all three. I believe you now have the majority to deliver this. The community stands ready to support you with expertise, labor, and even funding, but we will not tolerate weaponized incompetence or performative allyship. Leadership is not about saying the right words. It's about dismantling barriers even when it's politically or socially uncomfortable. To Mr. Kim, you were hired to lead, not placate. One of the most important reasons I supported your hiring was because you pledged to confront injustice. We need you to act like it. To senior staff, resisting change, adapt or please step aside. To the board, use your power. Reject the glacial pace of progress that keeps failing students. And to the community, hold them accountable. Pack these meetings. Demand transparency. Our kids' lives depend on it. While we are here to help, our patience has run out. The time for excuses is over. The time for courage is now. Let us get to work together. Thank you.
That was the last application.
All right, thank you. We have action items which are to fill four positions of officers on the board. Three of them are elected, and the first position we would like to fill is board president. The most immediate responsibility a board president does is to preside over the board meetings. They look over the agenda, and there are a whole host of responsibilities that are listed in the board policy that they fulfill. If you would like to nominate yourself or someone else, please say so now.
I would like to nominate Craig Meadows for president.
Are there any other nominations? The window for nomination for board president has closed. Given that there is only one candidate that has been nominated, we may proceed by declaring that that person is present if they are accepting, and we will do it by a roll call vote. Do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination.
Okay, Cindy, would you please do a roll call?
Arlandu?
Yes.
Gerros?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Kilburg?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
Swisicki?
Yes.
All right, the next, I guess I gotta take over now.
My time is done.
Your time is done. The next officer position will be elected is board vice president. The board vice president fills in when the board president is absent and fulfills other responsible responsibility as noted in board policy. I will open the window for board vice president, so if you would like to nominate yourself or another person, you may do so now. I would like to nominate Erin Kilburg for vice president. You guys a moment to think about anybody else? All right, the window for nomination for board vice president has closed. Since there is only one person nominated for that, should he be willing to accept it, we can do a roll call vote. Do you accept?
I accept.
All right, Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Swisicki?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Kilburg?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Gerros?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, the last officer position we fill is board secretary. It's indicated in board policy. The board secretary makes all, make sure all of the documents are prepared, minutes are accurate, and it's the official signer of decisions that the board has made. I will open up the window for board secretary, so if you would like to nominate yourself or another person, you may do it now.
I'd like to nominate Katie Swisicki.
Okay.
Got a friend. Sorry.
All right, hearing no other nominations at this point in time, the window has closed for the secretary, nomination, window for nomination for board secretary has closed as there is only one, if you would like to accept since you're gonna nominate yourself.
I accept.
All right, thank you. We can do a roll call vote. Cindy, please lead a roll call vote.
Kilburg?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Gerros?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Swisicki?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
All right. Item five point four, appoint treasurer. There's one more officer. The position of board treasurer is a specific office where the treasurer must be able to compile monthly financial records, and they must be properly bonded. The board is able to appoint a non-board member to fill this office, and historically, this has, board has appointed the CFO as treasurer. With that, I would like to entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Tony Inglaci as the treasurer of the Board of Education, unless there's any questions first. Tony doesn't get to ask. Notice I don't have to ask if he accepts. All right, I will entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Tony Inglaci as the treasurer of the Board of Education.
So moved.
So moved by Danielle.
Second.
Second by Raquel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations to all those that have agreed to get a pay raise, I guess. Yeah, no, good luck. All right, item six point one, times and dates for regular and some special board meetings. So last vote that this board has to take tonight is to set the regular dates for the Board of Education as well as some special meeting dates. It is required by board policy that every spring the board sets the dates and times of the regular board meetings for the next fiscal year. This is done so that in full transparency, everyone knows when the meetings will be held. The way this calendar is put together is due to the district's operational needs. This coming year, a Tuesday after the nineteenth of the month is regularly scheduled in the draft dates, so it is the first Tuesday after the nineteenth. This allows our finance department to meet deadlines such as payrolls and bills. While it might not land after that date, we try to be as close as possible. I would like to mention that the meetings seem to land on the third Tuesday of the month, but that is not the guideline we follow, whether that is, it is after or near the nineteenth of the month. And if you find a way to get Outlook to tell you how to do that, please let me know. I haven't figured it out yet. Does the board have any questions or comments on that particular policy? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the dates and times for the regular board meetings held from July twenty-twenty-five through June twenty-twenty-six and all special board meetings as presented. So moved by Raquel, second by Erin. And just for you guys as new board members, board policy allows a voice vote such that we use to appoint the president pro temp and the president. However, for majority votes, this board will be doing what we call a roll ball vote. For this action, we will do that. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Swisicki?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Kilburg?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Gerros?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Administration and board comments. Tom, do you have anything you'd like to share?
I am just, congratulations, everyone. I'm really excited to get, working together as a, as a new board now, so looking forward to it. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Board, any comments you guys would like to make? Do we wanna make the newbies go first, or do we wanna fill in first?
I don't know.
Okay, thanks, Raquel.
Just good luck to RJ and Sue, and I thank them for their service. Welcome to Katie and Kristen. Good for working with you, and then just happy Passover, happy Easter, happy Earth Day. It's also National Arab American Heritage Month. It's also National Autism Awareness Month.
I have a few comments.
Go for it.
I'm sure you're surprised about that, but.
How many pages is it?
Just one, but I filled the whole page here, so. I wanna say again how exciting it is to have the BESPA contract approved, and I again wanna congratulate both sides in that negotiation. It was, really turned out being a very positive experience, so I'm very excited about that to move forward with everybody. I wanna give a shout out to two BPS one-on-one events that I attended recently. First was the Vocational Expo in Aurora that was on April tenth. Ms. Buddles, who was here recently presenting, and her team did an amazing job partnering with Bally's, which is a vocational group in the area, and the local trade unions. We brought a bus of students over there. I think we had about forty students. I might have that number wrong, but it was from freshmen to seniors, and it was, they got to meet different representatives from all the different construction trades, the plumbers, the pipe fitters, the painters, and I had a lot of conversation with students that were excited to learn about these opportunities, and I know there was then a follow-up, so the kids were, there was discussions on how to join these apprentice programs, how to write a resume, when they can get started, so, you know, I really think we're doing a great job of giving that as a viable career path and exposing it to those opportunities. The other was the All-City Fine Arts Festival. There's a sticker here on my computer I got that day on April twelfth. I think Mr. Kim attended that event. It was, in my opinion, like, sort of like every, all the arts were there performing in one spot, the Britolo and the high school. I saw orchestral and choir groups perform, large and small group. There was galleries of art, graphic design. One of our student ambassadors here was performing. Mr. Owen said this was a tradition we've had for years. Covid sort of disrupted that, but now, I think he said they anticipated a thousand folks were gonna attend that day, and we're gonna, he thinks big, so I can't wait to see what he does next year, so if, next year when we have this event, I would encourage everyone in the community to go check it out, because it really is a chance to kind of sample all the skills and talents of all our students. This week is prom. It was brought up in the previous meeting. It's an exciting night, but also an anxious night for a lot of parents, so I would just say that everyone out there have fun, but be safe. And then also that we're in the, to the stretch run, when we next gather as a body, we'll be talking about commencement, which will be the next evening at NIU, and I know a lot of students are announcing their decisions for their future plans, so I just wanna wish them good luck, and I wanna wish their parents good luck, as we sort of have the beginning of last this and last that. And then I just wanna close with saying congratulations to Ms. Gerros and her family and Ms. Swisicki on their election to the Board of Education, and congratulate Mr. Meadows on your reelection. I look forward to serving with all of you and the entire board for the next four years. And I also wanna say thank you to all those who voted and supported my reelection, especially my wife Kathleen and my children Emma, Jake, and Lily, and Emma who got to vote for me this year, so that was exciting for her. I promise to serve the community to the best of my ability, and I always put student needs at top of mind. And finally, to the outgoing members, Mrs. Locke and Mr. Mathis, I just wanna say that it's been an honor to work with them. I told them privately how I feel, but I can say that they gave their best and in service to this community. It was an honor to serve with them, and I just wanna wish both of them good health and prosperity and the best of luck in their future endeavors.
Thank you. Thank you to Sue and RJ. It was an honor to serve with them. I'll just leave it at that. It was a real privilege. Katie, Kristen, welcome to the board. I look forward to working with you going forward here, and I think I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, sure, hi. Also, I'd like to extend my gratitude for RJ and Sue, who took off as fast as they could. I appreciate their service given, and welcome to Katie and Kristen. I'm excited for the voices and knowledge and perspective you guys are bringing to the board. I wanted to, I had let Craig know beforehand that I did want to bring up that I would kind of wanna put feelers out or just kind of put this out there maybe for our board workshop that's this summer, discussing the board.
Tenure? No.
Length of term?
Wait, thank you, thank you. The length of term for our officers, we are, per our policy, we are two-year for each of them, I think for vice president, secretary, and president. And I know on my onboarding, it was very hard to vote, and I know for you too. I mean, it's awkward to vote for people you've never worked with, people you've never met, and two years is half of your term, obviously, if you don't run again. And along with that, I just feel like there's some other pros that would go into if we were to talk about shifting to a one-year. That would allow onboarding members to get to know their board. Potentially, they may be able to, I mean, it takes a little time to get your feet wet, you know, six months to a year, potentially be, if there's any interest in them running or taking on any of those duties. Also, it'd give the new board the opportunity to discuss the roles, you know, does, the president takes on a lot. I mean, you spend a lot of time doing various things. Is there any discussion or any ability based on what I A S B has in line or however it works, that whatever we do have to follow, but is there anything that can go on to, whether it's a vice president or other board members, that give them the opportunity to be present in meetings or with various duties that would have relieved you, there's obviously president roles that you do have to do in different communications as board president, but I think that would be a great opportunity just to kind of give a new board that ability to have that back and forth and the open dialogue, and then potentially, if there are any changes, it may allow for someone to take on one of the roles. So I know it's probably a hard thought of, like, the first thought I had was, well, that's a lot of shifting, you know, every year, but I think there could be benefit and allows more of the board, we're seven of us, to have the opportunity. Not all of us will run for multiple terms possibly for various reasons, but we are all here, we're all a board of one voice, so I just feel like that it gives a better opportunity. So I know tonight, that's just my comment to you guys, and I would love to maybe add it to our workshop, and then if we are able to apply it, put it into policy if it's something that everyone kind of agreed on. Along with that, I just wanna be able to say again, I thank you for the, the time that you put in, into this role, and I know we are all working together, we're two years working together at this point. We're two years working together at this point. We've had some bumps, and we've discussed some things, and I just want to make sure to put it out there that my expectations, and I'm open to anyone sharing theirs of mine, with me as board members, I know we are open to, you know, making sure that we hear each other's voices and give that mutual respect, which I think we do very well. There are things that I would like to ensure that as board members, we are working on a little bit more thoroughly in this next time, like, under your president role, vice president, and under our time as board members. I want to ensure that, you know, we are following along to, when there is a request for a poll or things to be put on the agenda, that we don't run into as many barriers with that part of it, so that all of the board feels like there is a voice that, regardless of who we are. I want us to really work on that part of it. I think that we've all kind of discussed putting in for committees to maybe be shared, and I think that's something that Erin, you've brought up, and maybe we'll talk in our workshop about that as well. I just really, really want to put out, I just want to empower you as our president. Our role is to make sure we are a healthy board, and, you know, we do employ Tom, and he employs Admin, and I think our role is to ensure that we are as healthy together as possible, and our role is to back each other up and ensure that our voices are all heard, represented, and we're not putting roadblocks up for each other, or else we can't do our jobs to represent our kids and support our kids. If we are barriers for each other, we cannot be effective board members for our kids. And so I think a lot of that, I think we've talked about, like, communication, again, board workshop. We all communicate differently. We all have different backgrounds, and I think we need to make sure that we are understanding there's a best interest at play and hearing people out, active listening, right? Not dismissive or defensive if someone is saying something that maybe you don't agree with or don't understand. Have curiosity and really work to support each other and our voices together, so that we are a unified voice for Tom, he's a unified voice for Admin, and we're a unified voice for the kids. I just feel that we've had, again, some road bumps, so I have that confidence. I would not have voted yes, and I hope that we can continue that conversation. And again, I hope that with that, we can potentially talk about that policy, that term change, so that we can kind of mix things up possibly and give other people the opportunity, especially when you have people coming in. It's hard to run up against the incumbents. It's hard to come on to a board and say, yeah, I'm going to do it, when you've never been here before, and you have to wait a whole two years, and they're still, whatever. So that's kind of what I wanted to share, and I realize that we'll have to talk a little bit more in the board workshop about it.
Okay. I usually go last, so I'll let you two go first.
Okay. Just thank you to the voters of Batavia and to my family and my friends for supporting me in this endeavor, and I am so happy to be up here with everybody.
I look forward to discussing some topics at board workshop and kind of getting to know how everyone is going to work together, and I'm just excited to get to work for the kids, the students in Batavia.
All right, thank you. I was going to just kind of wrap up by saying, you know, I'm not going to disagree with anything anybody said. This is a board that should work together, and this is a board that will discuss how we want to work together, because there's an upcoming board workshop where we all get together, and it is within the bounds of the laws. It allows us to kind of have a closed session meeting to really talk about those things and hash things out and work through them. And I know we will come out at the end of that better for it, for whatever goes on in that meeting. And then additionally, just congratulations to our parting board members for what they've got in their future, and their student ambassadors in particular. I was just talking to them about kind of sharing with them, because they both mentioned they were interested in a pre-law kind of track, and since my son is going through Moscow Boulder right now, I was filling them in on getting ready to write a lot of papers. But they're very excited about their future, and I really think that that's kind of a credit to the opportunities that they've created for themselves and taken advantage of, of what the district gives them the opportunities to do. I won't say that the district has done it for it, because they've done that themselves. So I will say that I appreciate that we have two new board members at this table today. I'm very much looking forward to working with you two and everybody else. I think we are on a good path. A lot of things have gotten kind of cleaned up in the past couple of years with various contracts, that we don't have a lot of those hanging over our heads, so we can get on to doing a lot of the good work as opposed to the things we have to get done. But those were a very good process, so I appreciate all our partners that really worked favorably for that. And I am looking, on a more personal note, I'm looking forward to hearing about the Women in STEM session that's going on tomorrow, because two women in my office are going to that. They were, I was invited to ask if somebody in my office is an architecture firm, we had any women, that would be to attend the Women in STEM and kind of give a little talk to them tomorrow. So we have two, one of them's a partner of the firm I am also a partner in, and one's a younger, kind of new project manager, and I'm looking forward to hear all the excitement, because we're a firm of about, I think it's a little over fifty percent, sixty percent women in our firm, which is almost double the average of architecture firms. So to that end, I'm looking forward for them to show everybody what a fruitful career is. If not in the arts, it is also in science and arts adjacent at a minimum. So thank you, everybody, for your time and effort today, and all the, and sitting around through all those action items, particularly the families that came today to support the new board members. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the special reorganization meeting of the Board of Education. So moved by Raquel. Second by?
Second.
Second by Erin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. It is now nine sixteen PM.